Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting. I'm Sue Crane, Town Supervisor. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. This evening has been reserved for items on the agenda. There are copies of the agenda up here on the table if anyone would like to follow along. There is one presentation by our Chair of the Water Department, Henry Van Peres, which is an annual presentation to the Town Board. We are going to take time on the agenda to talk about an application that the town is undertaking for sidewalks on the east side of Route 9 that would be similar, matching sidewalks in a similar area to the ones that run down the west side of the road. So it would look like a town boulevard if and when we are able to construct it. So we don't have, I don't have a lot of announcements. I did want to remind people that this June 17th, Tuesday, the Red Hook Senior Services Committee is sponsoring a Give a Child a Summer Meal Food Drive, and that collection is located at the Red Hook Firehouse during the hours of 1:00 to 3:00 and 6:00 to 8:00. All non-perishable food items will be donated to the community action in Red Hook, which will turn, which will in turn earmark the donations for children in the Red Hook School District who might be in need of food donations during the summer months. So again, that's Tuesday, June 17th, if you would like to bring non-perishable food to the firehouse. I had a meeting with representatives from the New York State Department of Transportation regarding the restriction of a highway that affects some of our Red Hook residents, and that will be taking place in the months, maybe not until fall, maybe not until next summer, but they bring it to our attention that there will be restriction on the highways, on resurfacing Route 199 in the town of Red Hook, Rhinebeck, and Mylan. And I'm sure that Red Hook residents who have driven Route 199 are understanding that that is a good thing, and we're very happy about that. So that will be taking place, and I believe that's, see if I can determine when that's to start. I think it's to start this summer. Six and a half miles will be resurfaced, and this is dated May 7th, and it looks like it's imminent, so let's hope they get on it while the weather's nice and we begin to reap some of the results. Mayor Blondell and I additionally had a meeting with New York State DOT representatives to talk about the replacement of a bridge on Route 199, not this year, but next year, and the construction really depends on funding availability, but there will be a detour that amounts to almost 90 days of closing of Route 199, and a detour that would take you from Rock City down to the 9G intersection where it intersects with 308, down 308, to the 9G intersection, and then west on 9G or east on 9G, depending on which way you're going. So you'd be heading toward Rhinebeck, and unfortunately, that is going to direct traffic in summer months away from the village of Red Hook, but we're hoping that it will take place. We expressed to them that we were concerned about activities in the summer in Red Hook Village, as well as the Spiegel Tent at Bard College that attracts a lot of people on that route, and that we were hoping they would be able to accomplish it before July. So they understood that. They said that school bus uses, if they start early in spring when school is in session, the school buses can use the Rock City Road Bridge, and there will be obviously a lot of road markings and plenty of advanced notice. So that will be in the early spring of 2015. So they're giving us plenty of notice. Does anyone else have any announcements? Carrie?
No.
Bill? Brenda?
Just a reminder about the household hazardous waste collection in Rhinebeck on June 7th, so you still have a little time to register if you wish. Call 463-6020, or go to the Dutchess County website, dcrra.org, for more information. It's only $5, I believe, to register. You can get rid of your old paints and your electronics.
Yeah, there was quite a list of people, of things to get rid of, not people to get rid of, but things to get rid of. And do you have that list?
I don't have that list.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm on the board.
Yeah. It was extensive, I thought, and it made me think I ought to clean out my basement of all the old paint cans, so I hope people, and you do need an appointment, right?
You're supposed to preregister, yes.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Jim, anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right. So we're at the point, having had the announcements, oh, there's one more, and that is that Brenda and I will be attending, and maybe Laurie, I'm not sure, will be attending New York Solar Summit on June 3rd. There's a conference at the City University of New York at John Jay College in New York from 8:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening, and there's a panel discussion, and they are asking for members of communities that have signed on to the initiative to have a uniform code in their building department that makes it easy. It's a uniform throughout the state code that makes it easy for contractors to install solar, and we were one of the first to sign on, and we were one of the first to get asked. So I intend to go down and give a lot of credit to the volunteers who got us started on solar installations, and I intend to tell people how important it is to engage the community and make sure that they listen to their volunteers, because many times the volunteers bring huge expertise to town boards, and certainly in Red Hook's case, that has been true of the Conservation Advisory Council. So we're looking forward to doing that. And that's it. So we'll open the floor to public comment if anyone would like to do it now or at any time. Now, Mickey, are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
How are you?
I'm fine, thanks. And I've been here for a while to report on county business, so I have a few things I'll go over related to that. We did have our cleanup day in Red Hook. Unfortunately, it was the same day as communion for St. Christopher's. We did have about a dozen people show up, and sadly, there's still a lot of trash that's being thrown or blown around our Red Hook streets, so possibly we'll do another one in September, sometime around that International Cleanup the Earth Day. I did host a town hall meeting here on May 7th, which addressed the increase in opiate use, and we had a nice panel with police from the Red Hook Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Northern Dutchess Paramedics, the Red Hook School District, and Elaine Trumpetto from Dutchess County CA, which is the Council on Addiction Prevention and Education, as our keynote speaker. We had about 30 people there, and really what we want to focus on is what can we do as a community to form a coalition and really speak openly about prevention, and there are some models out there that we hope to tap into with the help of the Dutchess County. We also got some information that night about a new way to reach emergency hotline for the Department of Mental Health, and I was pleased that they were here also to speak about this, where now we can use this new technology. If we're in crisis, we can just text the Department of Mental Health by sending a text to 741741, and just text DMH, and then you'll connect with somebody online there. So if anybody young or old needs that service, by all means, something that should be used. We also, having served on the Red Hook Town Board and always proud of the great efforts that are being made environmentally in Red Hook, you know, we use that as a model down at the county quite often, and legislator Joel Tyner and myself and other legislators have sponsored a few resolutions. Unfortunately, they weren't even allowed on the agenda. Those resolutions that we were disappointed that didn't get on were to ban the use of fracking grinds, which Red Hook has done, that if somebody's going to use pesticides at their home, especially through commercial, that the neighbors get 48-hour notification of pesticide application. Joel also put forward a resolution last year to have the county examine the buildings to see which ones might be suitable for solar, and they're moving forward on giving us some information on those buildings. And more recently, we proposed a possible ban or small fee on plastic shopping bags. That's one of those things that when we were doing the cleanup, we see all over the landscape, up in the trees, on the telephone wires, and I think that, you know, we can look into what we can do to limit the use of those things. But again, unfortunately, they haven't even been allowed on the agenda. What has been on the agenda are several bonds that the county has voted on, and to date, as of the June legislature meeting, we have over $24 million worth of bonds that have been approved by the legislature. And they include things for GIS equipment, improvements to the auto center, purchase of a number of vehicles for the Sheriff's Department and for county employees, bridges, repairs to the mental hygiene building, and the big one is for bridge repair. That's a 40-year bond that'll go out on bridge repair. But again, as of, well, I should say the end of May, it's at $24 million, and that's before interest. So the other big thing that we voted on recently is to bring in the temporary housing to the county jail. I did vote no on that, and my no vote was because the county did not follow the recommendations of the experts that said where the pods should be placed, and where the decision was made to place them, in my opinion and the opinion of others who voted no, is the only place where that jail could be expanded at the current facility. So the pods where they're going to go will block that possible expansion, and we're looking at, you know, a bigger facility in whatever fashion it comes. There'll be some beds that'll be for incarceration, some for mental health, some for women. We are promised that whatever's going to be built will address the issue of the mixed kind of populations that are there. You can be sure that we'll be keeping up with how that moves forward and make sure that the taxpayers are not being, you know, stuck with a $180 to $200 million jail. You may also know that the state came through with some funding so that the county could eliminate the sales tax on energy sources like oil and electricity. That'll go into effect June 1st. Now, what that does is it will cause a loss in revenue of about $4.5 million. I haven't seen what we're getting from the state and when. It sounds like it's going to be partially reimbursed to the county this year and then also in 2015. So once again, you know, tax, the sales tax that's not going to be realized is going to, you know, cause a deficit in the budget. Aside from, you know, a lot of different things that are regarding adjustments to county tax amount, those are the big things that are going on down the county. Anybody has any questions for me? I'm happy to answer.
Hi.
Yeah.
New York City Police have been issued an antidote for people who have an overdose of drugs, of recreational drugs. Do you know whether there's any conversation about the possibility of that being the case in Dutchess County?
Yes, I believe law enforcement are getting training on that.
Oh, really?
In fact, Tom Stark, who was here from Northern Dutchess Paramedics, brought a sample of that to our town hall meeting that we had, and they are being trained to use that.
Okay.
Phil, did you have a question?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Is there any other public comment before we start the agenda? Harry Mann, the first item on the agenda tonight is Henry Van Peres' very first. We're going to get you home in time for a good TV show before a nap.
I was just getting ready for a nap here.
I know you do, and we forgive you for that.
Thanks.
Anyone can nap here. It's easy to do.
One. Two.
I explained before that this is an annual event, that we have a water department report. It's a significant and successful operation, and Henry's been at the helm for, I've forgotten how many years now, about 10?
Probably since 2000.
Okay, it's more than 10.
Close to 14.
Okay.
If you don't mind us, my standing ability is somewhat limited here. Anyway, I'm here to subject you to your annual ordeal, and we'll try to move right along. Starting with the organization, the Water Board are all long-term members. They're great people, very smart, and often make me feel like I really don't know very much. And Jerry Gilneck, in particular, the Vice Chairman, I'm just so happy that he joined us. He's got so many years of experience, just a great guy. System operation, we are currently with VRI Environmental Services since, well, over two years now. Their contract is up this year. So we discussed at the recent Water Board meeting in May, should we go out for bids for a new operator or renew the contract with VRI? And they deferred to me, since I deal with these people all the time. I'm basically happy with them. There aren't a lot of people in the business, you know, especially based on our experience here with Jim Riley, who was the operator when the town took it over. Jim was very casual to say, you know, rightly. Rich Kane was a heck of a good guy, very competent, but he too was, you know, rather casual. I think these guys are just a little cut above in terms of the reports and staying on top of things. So my recommendation will be, and probably will be, we'll have to come to that decision in September timeframe, probably will be to renew. Okay, 2013 highlights, I think you were all involved quite a bit with that lot transfer on Astron Mall from the Town Water District to the town for use as a trail, and I think that was a mutually beneficial transfer. Our billing system, SCA was replacing, did replace the old system with a new system. The cost of the upgrade was $3,900. We argued a little bit, said we didn't need it, we didn't want it, so they let us have the new system for nothing, because they don't want to maintain the old system, you know? So it's good for them, and okay, not necessarily good for us. It saved us some money, but we didn't need the function. Pump house buildings, there was some significant deterioration of the utility building and the pump house building itself. Repairs were done by our friend here, Doug, and the Endland Construction Company. Some rail repairs and then restaining of the buildings that got done last year. We just got a little clarification of our permit from the DEC. They issued the pumping permit, and their permit wording refers to supply of water to in-district users. It essentially, it doesn't mention it, but out-of-district users are not covered in that permit. So I talked to someone in the organization who told me that, yes, there's some flexibility. They allow up to five, you know, plus or minus. So we have currently three, including the town rec park, so we're okay for now. Graffiti on the water storage pit. Well, our fence is in dire need of repair, and barbed wire is rusted, so kids go over that fence relatively easily. They choose not to go up over the poison ivy, I assume, but anyway, they go over the fence. There are currently four items of graffiti. Pretty fairly well done, but anyway. So we hope to put an end to that problem very soon. What we had to do, we had a bid from Adams Fence to replace the barbed wire, and with all the poison ivy there, they just said, "We're not going to do it." So we talked to the Poison Ivy Patrol, this guy, that's the name of their group, Poison Ivy Patrol, and he gave us a price for removing the ivy, all the vines, by the roots, you know, well, there are always some roots left, I guess. But anyway, his price was $2,700, but he didn't have insurance, or he couldn't show us insurance at the time. So we got in touch with Integral, they came over, gave us an estimate, and what they're going to do is remove the top three feet of the vines, and then spray the remaining stubs to try to prevent further growth. Adams said they needed the top two feet removed, so we'll be supposedly hopefully in good shape with Adams. When that poison ivy gets removed, we'll get in touch with Adams, and see if their bid from last year is still good, and so on, get that done, make it a little more difficult for the kids to go over the fence. Water meters, new water meters have to be lead-free, so we've been, we did last year quite a bit of looking around, talking to people, and we decided to stay with Badger, our current meter supplier, and what we had to do was order a probe. It touches the external register and reads the usage, so it isn't a visual display as the current remotes are. So we can then transcribe that. It's not, you know, the long-term best solution. The village is using, you know, the real automatic meter recording, and that's, it's amazing. The guy turns on its reader, and here reads half of the village. Anyway, but for now, we're going to continue with our way. Any new billing system that goes with these AMRs is very expensive, so we don't need it. Plastic pipe for service lines, you were all involved last year. We have given the rules and regulations to allow use of plastic pipe wherever it's beyond a meter pit. That means all the pipes on the customer's premises, it's all customer's pipe, and any leak will show up on the customer's register. The big problem with plastic pipe is leak location, and we didn't really want to get into that, the problem. So if a leak happens in the plastic pipe that we allow, it's on the customer's meter, and it's a customer's problem. So they have the option, you know, using plastic or copper. Water quality, all of our tests were okay, aside from the irregular turbidity, bacteria, disinfection byproducts, and nitrate, which are yearly, others are daily or monthly. We tested for inorganic contaminants, principal organic chemicals, and radiological contaminants, and no problems. Dutchess Health Department did not inspect us last year. Usually they come around and take a look at the pump house and the storage tank, and he's been pretty good lately. He and Rich Kane didn't get along, so intended to ding us a little bit when Rich was here, but he's been good lately. This year, okay, continue with the normal stuff. The only special test this year is synthetic organic chemicals, SoCs. I think they're in the process of testing, sampling that now. And current items, we will begin to install of new badger meters as needed. We haven't needed any yet. We had a backlog of, I have a dozen or a few. So we did order 10, and tree and brush clearing, I guess Sue, you can involve in that a little bit. We needed to have some trees, dead trees cleared from perimeter of the water tower. And while Tom Miller and I were up there, we noticed some hazardous dead trees around the radio tower fence. So he gave us an estimate, sort of a minimal estimate, and then Steve Cole and I went up and took another look, and Steve identified, I guess, about 10 trees that he thought should come down, and then Tom updated his estimate for the clearing around the water tower, and he's got his PO, and I think he was going up there last Saturday or Monday. Carol Little saw him, and our friend, the keeper of the checkbook, Ted Cudsey, he saw him, so I suppose that work is done now. It's, just an aside, it's not scary, but awesome, the number of dead trees up there. You drive up that driveway to the towers, especially on the west side toward 9G, I know it's not half, but it seems like half the trees are dead. It just blows your mind.
Is that recent?
It's gotten worse recently, yes. And a lot of them are pine trees, but...
Are they ash?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't, we didn't stop to take a look.
Okay.
I wouldn't know ash anywhere. I know we have that border problem, but... Okay. I mentioned the poison ivy removal, and then we'll have the fence repaired. Future consideration, primary one is still the storage tank. What do we do with that immediately? Next year, we have inspected, see where we are. And sometime after that, we'll have to decide, do we prepare it or replace it? Oh, the other thing we're thinking about, I've been meeting with Sue and the mayor and Bridget about supplying water from our system to, via the village, to town customers out here south of the village. It looks like village supplies are, they may be adequate in a few months, they may still be marginal, but they will need, we believe, and I think they agree, they need us at least as a backup, as an emergency supply. Who knows? They may need us for more than that. Turns out that we have the connection, the water connection that was put in about 1990. It's marginal in terms of the size and capacity and our capability to supply water to the village. The village is at higher elevation than our system, so we would need some kind of a booster phone, and that's to be looked at and estimated and so on and so forth. Anyway, that's been interesting. No water main extensions planned, and I just mentioned that involvement with the Hoffman-Kurchhoff project. Financial overview, our income was $107,600 this year, about $1,000 less than last year. For some reason, our monthly pumping... For some reason, our monthly pumping, therefore the monthly usage each month seems to be, it's lower than it was, for whatever reason. So that was a hundred and seven, almost a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Operating expenses were eighty-four point four. Nothing unusual, just normal maintenance. So the income versus expenses, we had a surplus of twenty-three point two thousand dollars. And status of our reserves, we have the unreserved balance, which is sort of a working point, it's not really a reserve. And that's, was, at the time I did this report, was eighty-six thousand dollars. The transmission reserve, which was initially thought of as water main, either replacement or new water mains, is two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. And the reconstruction reserve, which was initially oriented toward replacing or repairing the tank, repairing, we didn't think of replacing it at the time. So that's three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Total of seven-hundred-and-five point six thousand in reserves. The real reserves are six-hundred-and-nineteen, almost six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. We tried to do a yearly transfer from that unreserved balance to reserve fund. I asked Debbie to do that over a month ago, I haven't heard whether she's done it. Asked her to transfer twenty thousand, we agreed twenty was reasonable at this point, from that unreserved balance to the reconstruction reserve. So that should, by this time, then increase by twenty thousand dollars. And if we can do more later this year, we will. So that's the financial status. Operation summary, not too much interesting there, as you see the usage in two thousand thirteen and the same as two thousand twelve, which was less than two thousand eleven. Same thing with the annual gallons pumped. Our pump-to-bill ratio is still pretty good, ninety percent, not anything over ninety percent. It is far better than most systems have. So we're still fortunate in that regard. And we haven't grown, we're still under four-hundred-and-eighty-four connections. So we're static. Okay, that's it. Any questions?
Hank, on that last page comparative operations summary, the build-to-pump ratio is interesting. Can you describe to the board what happened between two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, that the difference is almost eight percent? And then it drops again the following year and then it jumps up to ninety-two percent again. I just wondered, you know, it's bouncing around, I just wondered...
The only thing I wouldn't recall specifically, but a couple of times, in fact, just recently, we've had to operate the pumps manually.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, they get turned on, they may run overnight and the tank overflows. I didn't address that, I had a note here, but we recently had a problem with one of the wells, one of the pumps, had a bad circuit breaker. And that was replaced by our well guy, Jerry Decours. And that really hasn't resolved the problem. So we have talked about getting the electronics guy, Tom Kelly, who put in our pump controls back in two thousand and ten, I think. And have him take a look at it, because Jerry just hasn't been able to resolve the problem. So when you operate the pumps by hand, you do get that kind of, it depends on how long you do it, you can get significant overflow. That's the only thing I can think of at this time. We haven't had any major leaks. But I think, if you remember, Ed Glundell was talking about their water losses. They probably have been running something in the sixty percent pump-to-bill.
Right.
So they waste, lose a lot of water. We're looking, of course, to replace some water mains and...
Of course, hydrant flushing and other things like that are part of that, aren't they?
Yeah, that's part of it, sure.
Well, in two thousand and ten, they built a mountain up, they built the mountain up rather substantially, so...
Oh, that was barred. That was the subways supply barred summer and fall, when they were redoing their system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hank, I was wondering if, when the R I gives those reports about the water quality, and I know we always come out really well, do, would they ever do trending, just to keep an eye on what's happening?
No, I think not any trend. I think if we were looking to improve in some way, we might want to track trend. But we have no quality problems. We haven't had any quality problems. So nothing can trend. It's, all the results have been good.
And then another thing, if and when we get money for this proposed sidewalk, what are your thoughts on the water main that would be under, in that area?
Water main, yeah. That's a good question. You know, ideally, you would install a water main before you put the sidewalks down, ideally. But that's a lot of extra money. In a, in a perfect world, yes, do the water main first.
It is four inch, right, at that point?
Oh, I don't, we don't know what it is.
We don't know?
The water main on the north end, we know, well, going down Willowbrook, we know it's four inch. We don't know what it is on North Broadway. And...
On South Broadway, right here, there's a water main here that goes as far as Metzger Road. We don't, we don't even know precisely where it is.
Oh, there's a hybrid out there.
Yeah.
And probably don't know precisely how big it is.
I don't think they do. The village put it in, didn't they? We didn't.
Oh, sure, we didn't know. But that's a problem. The report that the town, village engineer put together assumed that the water main on Route Nine North was six inch. It was six inch all the way down. When we installed the emergency connection, the information was that that was a six-inch main from the village. Turned out it was four inch. So you don't know until you get, you know, until you dig, read it down. Especially with an old undocumented system like the village.
Any other questions? We thank you again. We are in your debt one more time.
No, no.
Another year.
I'm in your debt. I enjoy this job.
Thank you very much.
I don't know anyone that has a nicer little job than this.
Wow. You've done a wonderful job with, with it and with the volunteers and we appreciate all of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Hank.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hank.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the sidewalk project. And we put it on the agenda so, and sent out notices to property owners who may be adjacent to the proposed sidewalk area. And we were hoping we could answer any questions that those owners of property along the Route Nine, Route Nine East would have. So if you have comments about it, we'll try to be attentive to your concerns. And if you would just tell us who you are and what your concerns are, we would appreciate that. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about that? Yes. Yes, please use the microphone, thank you. I know, it's so intimidating, isn't it?
I'm Linda Kuhn, this is my husband Glenn, and we own a rental property on seven-three-oh-six South Broadway, which is right down here next to the vet. And we just, Glenn and I just want to say we're one hundred percent for the sidewalks. So that's all, yeah, that's our comment. We just hadn't commented yet on it, but we just want to put that on the record that we wanted to be a walking town and village. And one of my friends witnessed someone get hurt because she stepped in a puddle and she ended up having to call nine-one-one for because she was a young girl laying on the ground and she got hurt because there were no sidewalks. So Glenn and I just want to say we're for them. That's why we came today.
Well, we appreciate it. It's not a very nice night to come out and thank you very much for making that comment.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda, I wonder if you would like to talk a little bit about the, our hopes for this, this project, whether it happens all at once because we are lucky enough to qualify for the funding, or whether we do it in phases? You want to just talk about why we think it's important?
Do I have one letter from a resident that can't be here and asked, and gave it to me and asked me to read it?
Okay.
So should I do that before we discuss it?
Yes, yes, you should do that. Thank you.
These certainly are not my opinions, but I've been asked to read this letter from a resident. And this is the Save Our Town Committee and Rosemary Zangin is the spokesperson. And this was given to me yesterday, stated today. Good evening, Madam Supervisor and members of the board. I come before you once again on behalf of myself and my neighbors to let you know that the business owners on Route Nine Quarter, where you intend to plant concrete sidewalks instead of trees, do not agree with your plans to invade taxpayers' pocketbooks, once again, with the maintenance costs of a sidewalk extending that far from the village center. You want a traditional neighborhood. Perhaps that should have been thought of before town forefathers tore down a hotel and replaced it with an extra mark, before you crowded open space with a Pizza Hut and a Dunkin' Donuts, before you neglected to wait for the likes of an Adams Fair or Farms Market and allowed a big box store. You're now in process of attaining another grant for your concrete sidewalk dream. The county has said no, other funding has said no, and now you're going for federal and state dollars. Why? Why don't you ask for funding for a community center for seniors? Why don't you look for funding to stop the heroin and drug problem that plagues our school systems? Why don't you stop spending taxpayers' hard-earned dollars for concrete sidewalks and let them keep some of that money for their own purses? We are overtaxed, we are overburdened, we are underprotected because of the town budget in terms of police protection, and we do not support a sidewalk on Route Nine on such a busy truck-dominated thoroughfare. Make your plans, beg for state and federal monies with your grant applications, but now we, the overencumbered taxpayers, are making our plans to stop you. Although the average age of landowner taxpayers in that quarter, where you intend to put your concrete threat, is approximately seventy years of age, we have wisdom and we have the right to a referendum. However, if you do win, know that we will not maintain your sidewalk folly that threatens pedestrian safety and may be the death knell of the village center. We have a book, Slam Dunking Walmart by Al Norman, that I think the members of the board should read before taking another foolish step toward pursuing sidewalks where they don't belong. Work on beautifying your village center, fix your existing roads. Thanks for letting us know by mail six days before, on a holiday weekend, that you'd be discussing this sidewalk topic tonight. Here are some names to add to our already existing petition. And this is signed by the Save Our Town Committee, Rosemary Zangin spokesperson, Kathleen Dowres, Ralph Resenda, Anne Freed, Thomas Malika, and Michael Brown. And apparently, this is their opinion about our proposed sidewalk project. I was asked to read the letter, it certainly does not reflect my own opinions, but I think it's, we're obligated to put it into the record.
Could you put that in writing, please?
So to respond to Sue about why we want to do this, one main reason, of course, is for safety. Often, we are seeing residents walking along the east side already of the highway, the speed limit's forty miles an hour, in the dark, I, you know, you can hardly see the people. So, I mean, safety is one of the main reasons, but it's not the only reason. We're promoting a walkable, bikeable community. This is an obvious missing link in that plan. As part of this grant application, we're also proposing to complete the west side sidewalk across the street from Town Hall. There's a missing gap. And when I visited Red Hook Commons the other day, one comment I heard was that now the residents are having a difficult time walking down that side because of the missing, the missing link. So when we do get this east side sidewalk, we also propose, because of the speed limit, two additional crosswalks, again, for safety. And we think one site would be by where the theater, movie theater exits and enters. And another proposed site is by Town Hall, or alternatively by Dunkin' Donuts. So that would be clarified at the design phase of the project, the professionals would better define where the best spot for that would be. And by the sidewalks, we would have these flashing beacons, so pedestrians would, cars would be more alert to pedestrians crossing in these areas. We're hoping for some tree planting. With this grant, it's a little difficult to do trees and benches, because when they must happen on private property, then we have to actually acquire the property or write to the property. So we have chosen not to place benches on, try to place benches on private property at this time. Perhaps the town can place a bench on, at Town Hall, maybe St. Margaret's. Those are ideas for the future. So to make our community more walkable, to make our people safer, to promote economic synergistic relationship with the village, these are the reasons why we think a sidewalk is a good idea. And we have a petition that's been circulated at Red Hook Commons with many signatures in favor of the sidewalk. I have a petition started for the businesses at Hardscrabble. I have three people signed up from Hardscrabble. We have a letter of support from Todd Baywright, a major business owner in that section of town. And we have a petition signed by many residents along the east side of Route Nine. We have a letter of support from the Economic Development Committee, also from both village mayors. We're expecting letters of support from our state representatives' offices and perhaps another one from another office, but, yes.
Will bike striping be put in?
Not, not as part of this grant. They encouraged us to stick with one focus, which would be pedestrians. And, and of course, we would hope that on a second phase, we'll extend this to Hannaford. That's been a big request. If in the next fourteen days, a couple of people would magically come forward and say, yes, we'll, we'll do that for you, we would be thrilled. But as it stands now, the project goes to Hardscrabble, about Holy Cow.
I don't think anybody could have described it better. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm always, I'm always amazed at the numbers of people in Hardscrabble Commons who walk, you know, walk up and down. And the fact that we would have handicapped accessible sidewalks down to Holy Cow, they're not too old for ice cream, are they?
I don't know. Why do you look at me when you say that?
Well, I just, you might have an opinion. I, I think it would be absolutely beautiful entry into the, into the town and village and, and I hope, I hope we're successful. And I thank you, Brenda, for all the behind-the-scenes work you did, even while you were on vacation. It was an amazing effort. And Paula Schoonmaker and...
And Laurie Houston.
Laurie Houston.
Jen Soho, always a team.
Yeah. A wonderful group of people that have worked on this. Thank you. So when would we know? The application is due...
The final application is due June eleventh.
June eleventh. And probably announcement in the fall, early fall, I would guess, right?
Yes, I actually forget when the announcement is.
Yeah, okay.
But we did get comments from our pre-review submittal and we're working on those.
Good. Well, thank you for all the hard work and for the notification to residents. And thank you for coming and speaking for it. We appreciate that very much. We, every year, acknowledge the fact that the Town Justice Department is audited and there is a resolution in our packets to acknowledge that. And I guess we just do just that regarding the above subject. That is, the required audit of the town, the Red Hook Justice Court was conducted. And we asked that the Town Board pass the following resolution for compliance with Section two-zero-one-nine-A and the Unified Court Systems Action Plan for Court Justices. Town Board of the Town of Red Hook acknowledges that the required audit of the Town of Red Hook Justice Court for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen... Hook Justice Court for the period ending December 31, 2013, was conducted. The town's accountant, Lori E. Doty, CPA, performed the audit. And I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And there's a copy of Lori's accounting in your packet. The next thing on the agenda has to do with the boundary line adjustment that we spoke of last time we met. And some of us were a little reluctant without having seen copies, and I apologize for not having copies of what it was we were referring to. It was pretty straightforward. It's a lot line adjustment from the Feller Farm Estate to a family whose name is Dean Kent. And if we hear no other objections, I'll sign that letter. Is, are you, you're satisfied with that, Bill, having looked at it?
Yes.
And I think everybody else is, and so we will just acknowledge that we are in receipt of it, and we have no objections. Okay. The next item talks about the Community Development Block Grant for 2015 application. As most of you know, the federal government dispenses funding for certain areas in need throughout the country. And in the case of Duchess County, Duchess County is the agency that determines through applications from various municipalities, the worthiness of their applications, and whether or not they in fact meet the federal guidelines for addressing some of the needs in those areas. They have a five-year priority plan that I believe goes currently to the year 2017. Among the priorities are handicapped accessibility. We must apply for an area that is in a block, that is, an area of the town that is in financial distress, so that the monies don't get channeled to people who don't need it. It is often used for municipal need if, if it can be demonstrated that, number one, the area qualifies for the grant, and, number two, that it's a priority. I will tell you, because I said on the committee, the requests are many, many more dollars than there are dollars to go around. So, it's a very highly competitive grant. It's an annual grant, but it does help communities to afford things like handicapped sidewalks and handicapped parking. And in the case of Pine Plains, last year, they were granted a new recreation pavilion that was, I think, probably 50 years old, and it was replaced with, with all of the handicapped accessible features that they deserve. And the town, the county planning people visit the sites, ta, look carefully at the actual applications, and, and talk about, is it ready to go? Is it something that the town is committed to, or the village is committed to? Is it a need? Is it going to benefit? And if so, how many people? So, it's, it's really a very thorough and well-run program. And what we are talking about, speaking of sidewalks, is how important it is in our town, on our town campus here, that we have better designated handicapped parking spaces close to the building, and moreover, with sidewalks that are out of the traffic pattern. So, we've started to look at a design for parking lot, and we've talked to DOT officials. Brenda and I met with a gentleman who's a traffic engineer, who gave us great suggestions. And Teresa Burke from the Highway Department is on board, looking with us about how we can best utilize the amount of space we have for parking and the amount of space we have for traffic patterns that will make it safer for everyone who comes here. So, I just wanted to, to give everyone a heads up that that's what we're thinking. It doesn't necessarily mean that's the only idea that will come out of our discussion. I believe that the, the actual application will come out in July, and I think it's due back to county planning, October, I think, if I remember right. And so, we'll have a few months to work on this, but we know we need resurfacing of this parking lot, and we hope we'll be able to reconfigure it so that it's safer for everyone who comes here. That's pretty much all we know at the moment, but I wanted to tell you about it. Okay, so we have reports now, unless the board has anything else they'd like to bring Zoning Board of Appeals, Jim, you have that one, I think.
Yep, I have the report here. It's just dated today, Zoning Board of Appeals Monthly Report. The Zoning Board of Appeals held its meeting on Wednesday, May 14, 2014. The public hearing for Donald W. Triwell application took place. Two neighbors attended the public hearing who were opposed to the Funshine Nursery School purchasing Half Day, Half Pine Day Care located at 208 Rockefeller Lane. The first neighbor is concerned that the variance request is increase the amount of enrolled children from 60 to 120 would cause too much traffic on Rockefeller Lane. The second neighbor is concerned about whether or not fencing and trees on the property now are actually on her property. Another issue for her is when snowplowing takes place, that her property gets dug up from the snow. The continuation of the public hearing would take place on June 11, which is the Zoning Board's next meeting, 2014. The Zoning Board of Appeals held the appeal with Susan M. Simon and Elizabeth A. Jones for a use variance. They want to convert a 500-square-foot portion of the second story of an accessory building of Arn to be used as an accessory apartment. Since the last CBA meeting, the applicants have withdrawn their application. The next meeting is scheduled for June 11.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a planning report, or no?
No report, unless you have one, Jim.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think we have an Ethics Board comments, so that's a good thing. Okay. Department reports. We do have animal control, and Brenda, I think that's yours.
Mm-hmm. There were nine dogs at large, two on Carriage Drive, and, and most of these, the owner has been educated on dog-at-large law. There was one on Glen Ridge, one yellow lab, and the owner was found prior to arrival. Two Bernese Mountain Dogs found on Route 308. Two dogs at large at Poet's Walk. They were from Roffey, I guess, and one on Memorial Drive. There was one barking dog on Echo Valley Road, and the dog owner was educated on the noise ordinance. Two wildlife, they don't say what kind, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda. Until it's spring, there are more dogs out and about, right?
Wildlife.
Yeah. And wildlife as well. Right. The assessor's report is dated May 28. Since the last Town Board meeting, the assessor's office has been involved in the following activities. Number one, 2014 tentative assessment role was published on May 1, in accordance with state real property tax law. Number two, conducted an open book hours to sit with a role for public inspection. Number three, the assessor met with taxpayers informally before grievance day. Number four, he attended the Board of Assessment Review meeting for grievance day on May 27. And number five, is currently processing 48 grievances and corrections for the 2014 assessment role. And again, his staff and he remain committed to fair and equitable assessment practices, and looks forward to continued service to this community. The attorney will be joining us a little later. I have nothing to report in that regard, and the business manager as well. Only to say that the business manager has officially determined that she will retire, and it will be a huge hole, I will say, in, in the administration for a while. However, she generously has agreed to stay on and train someone who is prepared to take that position, and she will do that for a little while. And we're hoping that it will be a smooth transition, so that by her date of retirement, which is early August, we will have someone in place, and should we need part-time, very part-time, help from the current business manager, she has agreed to come in and counsel with the new person. So, I, I think we've worked it out with county personnel, that it will be a fairly smooth transition, and we have already begun the interviews for that position. Building inspector, that's Jim's, I guess?
This is me, here.
Oh, sorry. Mine says Jim to report, but go ahead.
This is-
Jim. No, you go right ahead.
Jim, you've got a lot to do. I have a summary of the work by the Building Inspector's Office from April 21 to May 28, so it's like five weeks. But to summarize, there were 34 permits applied for and reviewed by the Building Department. There were a total of 38 inspections performed by the department during that period. The fees collected were $3,091, and are all itemized for the members of the board. And there were a total of 20 certificate reports issued. Complaints received by the Building Department during that time were six, and that's the summary of the report of their work for the past five weeks.
It's always instructive to, to look at this program and, and realize how often they go out and for how many different, you know, the variety of calls that they make, and the way they help people who are involved in improving their properties is really quite remarkable. I'm very, always very impressed. Thank you, Bill. I have a report from Duchess County Sheriff's Office for the month of April 2014, and it, it's pretty much a total of incidents in the town of Red Hook reported to me from week by week, Sunday through Saturday, serviced by our Duchess County Sheriff's Departments for various, all kinds of calls. And there were a total of 68 that month. And Water Department, Jim?
Yeah, it was pretty much, you know, what Hank went over when he gave us his total annual report. Just, and our, the only updated thing would be the latest one I have is that March gallons per day was a little lower than normal, otherwise everything else was just as Hank had said.
Thank you, Jim. Harry, do you have a purchasing report?
I do not.
I, I don't either. Okay. So, on to committee reports, and Pete Hubbell is here, who is ready to give a report for the Ag and Open Space Committee. Welcome, Pete. How are you?
I'm fine. We decided, we had our, thank you for allowing me to address you in person. We decided that we wanted to make sure that the fence issue we've been discussing got read, hopefully accurately, in a minute. So, we had a meeting last night in the room over there, and that was very, there was no fireworks, Bill. I don't know if that's because you weren't there, or-
Probably.
Anyway, we had, we, back in April, we had a joint meeting with the ZRC over ag fences. And so, we wanted to rewrite the code on agricultural fencing, and I will read it here as what we, what we approved, and we're going to send it to the ZRC. So, this is subdivision 143-28. We're recommending, this sentence is to be deleted. "Fencing for agriculture shall be authorized to a maximum height of eight feet in any required yard." So, that's, we want to delete that, and amended it to read, "Fencing for agriculture shall be exempt from height restrictions, building permits, and inspection by the Building Department in all zones, excluding spite fencing." And the adopted definition for spite fencing is a fencer wall that serves no useful purpose and is constructed as to be an injury to adjoining property and is erected and maintained for the purpose, purpose of injuring a neighbor's property. So, we're sending that with our recommendation to ZRC, who hopefully will, it seems that they would accept that, but we don't know until we meet. I think we're planning to have another joint meeting, then I guess we'll go to the Town Board for your approval or rejection, either of needs a public hearing or not. So, that was the main focus of our meeting. There's, one other issue came up at the, not an issue, but a suggestion at the end. It seems that, at the end of Steamboat Lane, down in Barrytown, there's a parcel owned by the Unification Church that I think wants to sell it, and I think the Bumps, from what we hear, may have been interested in it. John Hardeman suggested that possibly the town look into acquiring that parcel for river access, since there is no official river access by the town. It probably means that there's a little bit more research on our part as the Open Space Committee, but we wanted that, bring that to the town's attention and suggest, strongly suggest the town consider looking into possibly acquiring that. This would be for fishermen, small canoe kayak launching. It wouldn't be a formal boat launch like down at Ryanbeck, but a place where you could, you know, kids could cast a rod in the water with their father or friends, and, but we don't know about the access down there off of Steamboat Lane, how far that goes. Maybe, I don't think the Town Highway Supervisor might know, but we need to do some research. But I wanted to put that out to you to consider.
Thank you.
So, that was basically our meeting.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Pete.
Can we get the date for the joint meeting? Linda, was it-
June 12.
June 12. So, June 12 at 7?
You mean 7 o'clock? I think that's when-
7 o'clock is the joint meeting of the ZRC and the Ag and Open Space Committee, and that language is, will be sent over to Susan.
Yes. We've asked, Linda, you were going to send them, Linda's going to send them a memo to-
I think they're going to distribute it to the ZRC members before that meeting, so we, we're all-
I would assume Sue, that's up to Sue, I think. I mean, not us, not up to us to get it.
Right.
So, yeah.
We'll make sure they get it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Got it.
Thanks, Pete, for coming. I guess I'm remiss in not recognizing one of my favorite people in all the whole world, and that is the Town Budget Officer, Rose Ryder, who is here quietly sitting there, as she often does. She and I have met already one time, discussing the Budget 215, and anticipating meeting with various departments, and Rose does it better than anyone else I know. Do you have a report for tonight?
I do not.
You do not? Well, I feel relieved, because I thought maybe I left you out.
No.
Okay. I know it's your intention to start meeting with department heads and going over requests for their 2015 budget, so we appreciate very much your doing that, Rose.
It's almost that time.
It's almost that time, right. As we speak, it's almost the end of May. I, before we go on, I did want to, I meant to make an announcement. It, it's kind of an, an after the fact, but I think it's important to say that the Memorial Day service at the Red Hook Memorial Park was, again, a very beautiful- Day service at the Red Hook Memorial Park was, again, a very beautiful and moving event. Um, Commander Bill Moore, as always, does a wonderful job in having appropriate music. And he himself spoke this year eloquently about remembrance of not only fallen vets, but also veterans who could have been asked to serve and give their lives, as well as their families. And, uh, the high school band played, their taps were played. One of the most touching pieces that happens through that service is they have engaged, um, a homing pigeon owner with a cage full of homing pigeons, just the right number, which are the number of fallen soldiers from every war since World War I.
Thirty-one.
From Red Hook. Their total is 31. And with the reading and placement of a flag on each person's name, um, monument name, one dove is remote, is, is released. And that dove, as the name is said, flies into the sky, and it just is such a moving tribute. And if you have not gone to that service, I recommend it next year on Memorial Day. The parade is only part of it. The service itself, run by the, um, post 7765 of Red Hook veterans, um, is wonderful. And I wanted to say that before we went any further. Thank you. Anyone from Community Preservation Committee? Conservation Advisory Council, I know is represented. Hi, Lori.
Um, so, uh, we have been having a Climate Smart Month, as you know. Thank you for coming to that meeting. Um, as a climate smart community, we, um, since 2009, we've been working on our 10 pledge elements and so far have addressed, um, eight out of 10 in some form or other. And we're working on two more, um, of the elements. One of them is, um, support development of a green innovation economy. Uh, we are hoping to pilot a green business challenge in Red Hook. Um, so that, uh, we'll be talking about more next time. And then, uh, pledge element seven, enhance community resilience and prepare for the effects of climate change. I think we all saw the news, um, two weeks ago that we've locked in, um, the melt of the West Antarctic ice sheet. So we are, we're going to have the rise, and so we need to prepare for it, whatever that means in terms of insect vectors or asthma with, you know, bad air quality, um, or, you know, we're, we're a bit away from the river, um, but there are, there's flooding of the salt kill and all these sorts of things. So we are working with the state to do, um, uh, climate smart resiliency planning. And I think, uh, the chair of the, is it the Disaster?
Disaster Preparedness.
Preparedness Committee is taking this tool on this summer, um, to see what, you know, to get a baseline assessment of where we are. So that's the big work. And then, um, you already mentioned Muscle Hazers Waste Day in Reinbeck on June 7th. I, I pulled up the list because having sort of staffed electronic waste events and seeing the confusion about what people can bring and can't bring, it's actually really important to read the list before you come.
Thank you.
And to go to the website, um, if they haven't. Um, but the key part, you know, people say, I'm going to empty out my basement of paints, is they don't take latex paint. So, um, that's something that you can put kitty litter in and put in the regular trash. Um, but if your containers stay hazardous or, uh, flammable, poisonous, corrosive, those are the kinds of things that they want at the event. And there is a long detailed list of, um, the hazardous items and the e-waste on the website. So that's that. And tell a friend, because everyone has stuff in the basement. Or better yet, bring someone else's stuff, a neighbor who can't do it.
That's a great idea.
So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Lori. Thanks very much. Design Review Hamlet, I think that's quiet. Uh, Disaster Preparedness, I know that they, that committee was invited by Dutchess County, um, Emergency Response Center for a meeting this afternoon at four. And they were to tour that facility and talk with the coordinator of that Emergency Response Center. And I know that several of them were going. Additionally, the chair of that committee, um, has contacted other municipalities, Tivoli, Mylin, Reinbeck, um, Village of Red Hook, to see if he could, um, involve other people in attending at the same time, those who, who are not aware of what a great facility we have there. So they are, they have done that already today, and I hope the next time we meet, we'll get a report about that meeting. Uh, the Economic Development Committee, has anyone got a report from them?
Um, I do not.
Okay. Intermunicipal Task Force, is there a report?
Yeah, weekly meetings, um, in April and May, the task force reviewed memos from Green Planning to the town attorney and, from the town attorney to Green Planning in March and April regarding the proposed historic preservation zoning draft of March 20th, 2014. So that's, it works still in progress. At the May 2nd meeting, the task force met with the town highway supervisor and further discussed the Green Plan, June 24th, 2013 draft of recommended road widths for the traditional neighborhood district and rural roads in the town of Red Hook. And the November 25, 2013 draft, which is entitled Traditional Neighborhood Street Standards, has an addendum to the Town of Red Hook Highway specification. The task force agreed with the town highway supervisor, general consensus was that the whole document entitled Town of Red Hook Highway Specifications, which is a fairly huge document possessed by the highway supervisor, which has not been reexamined and updated in many years, should be reviewed in its entirety, preferably after the town obtains a grant to have that work done. So I think there'll be an effort to get a grant, apply for grant to, uh, fund that project. And the consensus of the task force was to have the November 25, 2013 final draft of the Traditional Neighborhood Street Standards and an amendment to page 32 of the Town of Red Hook Highway Specifications, just that one particular section, uh, reducing the width of rural suburban roads within the Town of Red Hook from 26 feet to 22 feet. Have that prepared as a resolution for the Town Board to approve as an addendum to the Town of Red Hook Highway Specifications. So we want to ask the town attorney, attorney for the town, to, uh, look into preparing that resolution.
Thank you, Bill.
Could I, uh, ask for whatever information you've had, and in particular, what Michelle had previously prepared? Uh, because I believe that the last time we were at a task force meeting, there were some questions that were addressed to Michelle. And if you had, if you addressed those, then could we have the feedback on that, please?
Yeah, they were all resolved. It had to do with the swale and things like that, but...
Right.
That four-page draft, as it stands, prepared by Michelle is, uh, is ready to go, is what everybody says.
Okay. Why don't we follow up? I'm going to need whatever paperwork you have from that meeting, please.
Panda is here tonight. Welcome. I don't know if you have anything to report. Thank you. Um, Rick Commission. Harry, do you have anything on the Rick Commission?
Yeah.
Actually, Harry, Harry is being replaced by the actual chairman. Hi, Doug.
Oh, how about that? Okay. That's great.
Is there, is there, is there a problem?
First of all, I want to say good evening to the town board, to Claire, who's stepping in, sitting in for a suit and cam, and everyone in attendance today. I want to start off with, uh, by showing you the new latest brochure for summer programs. It's out. It's a hard copy. You can catch a, a copy of it here in the town hall and a number, number of other places in town. Take a look at it. You can also, uh, see it online on the town website and, uh, on the Red Hook, the virtual backpack. So everybody can look into that and see what they'd like to sign up for. Now I need to put my glasses on. So along with, uh, signing up for the program, uh, we want to make sure that everyone signs up their permission slips. Uh, they can be found online also. And, uh, we will have signups, uh, two weeks in June, June 7th, which is a Saturday, and the following Saturday, June 14th. These signups will take place from nine to one right here in the town hall. Now, something that we've gone through, um, in the off-season is we've made a couple changes, uh, to this year's programs. First of all, uh, the tennis program has changed to what we call Quick Start Tennis. Uh, we have a new, uh, director. Uh, the fellow's name is Bob Meyerson. And what it is, uh, it's a little different than normal tennis. We're trying to target the, um, under 10-year-old, uh, participants. Some of the things that are going to change is, uh, they use smaller rackets, uh, they use foam balls for eight and under, and low compression balls for 10 and under. Also, the courts are scaled down. The whole idea is to make it fun. And if we can capture that, that right at the beginning, we feel this will feed into the tennis program at the school and, uh, lifelong tennis players. That's one of our, one of our major changes. The next thing is, uh, we normally have two pool parties during the summer. We have a youth party from, for eight to 12-year-olds and a teen party from 13 and over. We, once again, will sponsor these two parties, uh, but the pool personnel is going to run it in lieu of the, uh, our town people. Another thing that's happened, uh, is cross-country. The cross-country program, uh, was eliminated this year. One of the things that, uh, we do is, we try to keep these programs current, we try to keep them fun, and we have to have a certain amount of participants. We set it at a 20-person, uh, ceiling. If we don't get 20 people, we usually try to, uh, eliminate it for that year until we get, uh, more interest in it. That is just one of the things that we've always established, and we continue to do that with all programs. Another thing that's happened in this year, we have a new director for, uh, CoEd T-Ball. That's four to seven-year-olds. If you've ever seen them play, it's quite a, quite an experience. And, uh, softball for eight to 14-year-olds. Stacy Topman is going to be directing that program this year. Another thing that's changed is our Red Hook Summer Recreation Playground. Some of the changes that you'll see this year that have been initiated by the state as well as the county, are requesting that we bring more physical activity into the program. We have hired Courtney Carroll, uh, to, to direct this program. Just to give you a little background on Courtney, she has a bachelor's degree of science in movement and sports studies. That seems pretty interesting to me. As well as a minor in health education. She, uh, is licensed, uh, for physical education, covering pre-K in ages five to 12, which is who we're trying to target in this particular program. She works at the school as a substitute and, uh, is a lifelong, uh, living here in, in Red Hook. What I have here, and I'm going to pass out, uh, to the town board, is a five-week summer recreation program outline. She presented this to the commission, and, uh, it'll probably be tweaked a little bit, but we'd like to give you that readings, uh, take a look at it, and we're always looking for input. Finally, um, I just want to say that spring has sprung, except for today. So come on out to the park. It's in great shape. Believe it or not, as soon as the snow melted, we had people out there. We have a lot of activities going on at this point, uh, because of baseball, softball, and all the other things. You can go down there and see a thousand people at a time. So come on and visit the park. We like to show it off, and thank you for your time.
And thank you. Thank you for yours. Yeah, I think we're, we're so incredibly lucky to have that beautiful space for the kids to play in. I hope the weather improves so that I can enjoy many, many weeks of it. Any word from the St. Margaret's Committee tonight?
I just had their, they had a meeting, their last meeting was April 16th. They, they commented, they had, Arlene Wedge had written a nice article about St. Margaret's and it was in the newspaper. The Paranormal Group is going to do their study on April 26th. I have information on that since then. Um, a couple people would like to donate towards it, St. Margaret's. Um, that's really about it. And they had, on their new business, they discussed their phone survey that they had mentioned before, and we had discussed, and our county executive apparently took some time out to discuss with them and different ways they should do it and, and so on and so forth. And I'm sure they're going to, when they finalize what they're going to do there, let us know.
Thank you, Jim. The Tree Committee, is there someone here from the Tree Committee to report?
I have them report. I told Nancy I'd be happy to read it, but I couldn't do it in such a passionate manner as she is. The weather braced us with a good day for our Arbor Day celebration. We had two tree dedications. A Prunus Accolade, which is a cherry tree, was planted for Johanna Moore for her 25 years as the playground director at the rec park. And a Malice Snowdrift, which is a crab apple, was planted for George Hildenbrand for his many years of work as the Town of Red Hook Highway Superintendent. We also planted two red oaks on the hillside by the tennis courts at the rec park and three Triumph Elms on Linden Avenue Extension in front of the pool. We had 20 Arbor Day poster winners from Mill Road School selected from about 500 entries. Winners received books about trees. Lessons were conducted about trees at the outdoor classroom at Mill Road School, and tree seedlings were planted by the first grade. We distributed 80 tree seedlings and tree info at town hall. A delicious lunch was provided for volunteers and tree dedication guests. A big thank you to Jean Dunst, Sue McCann, and Marcia Pell for making it possible. We are working on doing some adjustments on our forestry management plan. We are sending drafts to the planning board and the CAC for their input. I attended a relief meeting on May 8th. We're planting beyond the right-of-way, otherwise known as brow, is an issue that is being studied. On June 5th and 6th, I will be assisting Eleanor Ferrari on tree identification lessons at Mill Road School as part of their BioBlitz program. I would like to thank the Tree Commission members for all their hard work. We are also very fortunate to have many wonderful volunteers that make what we do possible. Every planting session, we are very lucky to have Michelle Decker of Decker and Construction donate her time to prepare the site. Integral donated staff and equipment for planting. Volunteer planters, Chris and Janice Rifenberg, Joe and Caleb Chapman, Ted Sod and Ed Guske can always be counted on to pitch in. And that's from Nancy Guske.
We're going to pause for a tape change, please.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're back.
All right. And, and just to add to the Tree Commission report, they have some beautiful pictures on the town bulletin board. And I forgot to mention before about this, when we were talking about sidewalks, that we also had a nice letter of support from our county legislator, Nikki.
Thank you, Brenda.
While we're remembering what we forgot, I, I got to the back of my packet and realized there was a really nice monthly report from Lynn Caluccio, who is the Disaster Preparedness Committee Chair. And at their last meeting, along with other things that, yeah, they are doing and helping us to have a better understanding of, you know, people talk about disaster preparedness, and we often think about what we've already experienced, which is sometimes major storms or flooding, or trees down on wires and we're out of power. But, um, some of the things that keep us awake these days are, are things like, because we have CSX running through our town, there could be a train...
because we have CSX running through our town, there could be a train disaster where there would be spillage into the Hudson here on our shores. And, and that is not something that we have ever experienced, nor do we ever want to. But we are also bisected by major highways, nine and, actually, three major state highways. And of course, every newspaper has generally a report of an incident where a truck carrying something that is, that is dangerous to a community overturns. And it's always a blessing when, when it doesn't leak. So there are multiple disaster preparedness needs. And I must say that Vin Caluccio has been wonderful in picking up the reins of this committee and bringing forward some of the activities that we really all should be paying attention to. The last meeting they had was on May 6th, and he says, "As a part of our effort to foster better communication and collaboration with neighboring towns, David Campbell, Emergency Coordinator for Rhinebeck, was invited to share procedures with the committee, and all the members felt it was a productive exchange." So I did want to credit Vin Caluccio with his enthusiasm and, and follow-through. And that's it. I don't know if there is anything we need to cover. Let me just see if there's anything. No, I think, I think that's it for tonight. I did want to say before taking public comment, thank you, Doug Strawinski, for acknowledging that it isn't Sumacan sitting next to me. It is her able deputy, Claire. Thank you for coming in and, and helping us tonight. I'm sure it's nerve-wracking enough to have to do the minutes without having to sit here and listen to it. And you do a wonderful job with the minutes as well, so thank you very much.
And another thing we forgot was to thank the Trails Committee for their tour to Red Hook. We had, I think, about twenty to twenty-five people come out, so they did a great job. Nikki joined them, joined the committee as well, so we had good volunteers.
Yeah, if it just would not rain year after year on that day, I think it would catch on. I think this is the first, this is the first year in about three years that we've actually been able to have it, so it'll, it'll, it'll grow. And everyone who attended that talked to me, said they had a wonderful time. So thank you for your efforts in that regard. Okay, so is there any further public comment? Yes, Nikki.
When I was reporting on the county business, when Bill was, reminded me about historic preservation, one of the other issues that I voted no on was demolition of the poorhouse out in Millbrook, also known as the infirmary. You know, very significant historic past. There was a letter on file saying that it actually did qualify for some, some possible funding for restoration. The county's owned those buildings for quite a while now and operates. And one of the more modern buildings has probation or some social services out there. One building, the West Wing, will probably stay intact. But there are, we went on a tour of those buildings, and there are some beautiful architectural specialty items in there that I hope that will be preserved in one form or fashion. And I just think it's sad that the county is losing so many of its historical buildings to, to not being taken care of and demolition being the only solution that seems being kicked around. And that's going to cost us all eight-hundred-eight thousand dollars to take that down. The other thing I wanted to say is, yes, I'm very supportive of those sidewalks along the east side of Route 9. As you all know, we applied for that grant a couple of years ago, and I worked with a wonderful team of volunteers to try and get that through the first time. And like Brenda, they go through the Red Hook Commons, and the senior citizens there are very supportive. Additionally, I do hear from a lot of people with young families who say they are really looking forward to those sidewalks going in so that their children can have safe passage from the Village Center to one of their favorite spots, Holy Cow. So thank you again for taking on that task. And if there's anything I can do as your county legislator to, you know, help move that forward, please don't hesitate.
Thank you, Nikki. Anything the Board wishes to discuss? I'd like to suggest, oh, sorry, Lynn, I thank you, pardon.
I have a question for Lori. Lori, can you inform people about the Hook Trail? Anything? Do you know anything about it?
Yeah, so the Hook Trail, and I should say the website, because there's a Support the Hook Trail link. Maybe it's Google Vault, Red Hook Hook Trail, is an effort to connect Tivoli and Village of Red Hook along Route 9G, or, you know, way off of Route 9G, a safe pedestrian, mixed-use bikeway. Pretty amazing project. Robert George has put a lot of effort into a rendering on this website that everyone should go see of what it might look like for our community to have this trail put together. And it, you can take advantage of our, Vista, which is a valuable community asset that we don't all notice maybe when we're zipping along 9G, looking at the Catskills. And so, you know, step one, sort of the beauty and vision of the project is there. And now we need to fill that in with some engineering work, figuring out where the path would go, the path of least resistance, and get some grant money together. So it's a big effort ahead. Is that?
Thank you. And Doug, any progress on the new rest course? Where are we at that?
Actually, the Seeker has been completed. Now we're just looking to remind you to move over.
I don't have to comment that Red Hook is, is looking beautiful all the time and will get even better.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you for saying that. It's only because we have, in my opinion, we have people who are willing to work as if they were being paid when they aren't being paid anything, except for satisfaction. And there's just no question that that is why we get to be better. And, and there's just no way to thank people for all the effort and the time and the talent that they put into these projects, except to say thank you. Okay. I have reason to go into executive session to discuss briefly the hiring of a particular person. And we would like to go into attorney-client for the purpose of discussing contracts, so I'd make that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you all for coming.